It's six o'clock. At this time, I'll call the regular council meeting for Perry City Council Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, order please. We have four. Item three is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you're able, please rise. I'd like to call on Reverend and Councilman Willie J. King with faith, Bible, fellowship, church for the invocation.
[inaudible] I pray now, you may choose to lead us and gather us in the city, that we take care of them. Lord, we live long, pray for the people all night. Last, may the Lord damn them down before we actually recover them, and we last for long, my Lord. Just thank him, we pray. In Christ, then we pray. Amen.
I'd like to call on Councilman Robert Jones for leading some of the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
[inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item four, presentations and recognitions. Item four A, we have a special recognition of Chief Parker from Chief Williams with the Houston County Fire Chief and the EMA Director. Chief Williams, welcome to the City of Perry. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, appreciate it. Council members, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm representing the Georgia Association of Fire Chiefs tonight, I'm First Vice President, and on behalf of President Dwayne Jameson, again, thank you for allowing us to be here. It's a privilege to do so. Chief Parker, I guess if you want to come up, where do you want to go? All right. A few details on what we're doing here. The Georgia Association of Fire Chiefs has got a certification program, and we have three different levels of certification. We've got a Georgia Volunteer Fire Chiefs Certification, a Georgia Fire Office Certification, a Georgia Fire Chief Certification, three different levels. It's somewhat mirrors this federal EFO program, which is the program that everyone goes to in Edmondsburg, they get paid on credentialed and other things. This allows us to make sure that we have competent, credentialed, and educated fire chiefs serving our communities here in the state of Georgia. There's been approximately eighty of these certificates that have been given out so far since its inception, which is only about a year, and forty-five of them have been the Georgia Fire Chiefs. And I'd like to come today and present Chief Lee Parker with the Georgia Fire Chief Certification 2017 to 2020. Appreciate his dedication and hard work in doing these things. You have to have a combination of education, it's important, education, being involved in the state associations and other things to do this, along with your college education as well. So, congratulations on that, and it's a pleasure working here in Perry and being in Houston County. It's been a whirlwind since you've been here. It's been very pleasurable since you've been here, and I enjoy it very much, so thank you, thank you, don't hesitate to. Locally, for as the state association, same first, thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief Parker. If I could get Chief Lynn and Chief Parker to come back up real quick, please. I wanted to make everyone aware, if you were not, the Chairman of the Houston County Commissioners, Tommy Stonaker, had called everyone together for the Houston County Commission Meeting this morning at the Perry Courthouse. And one of the purposes for that was to recognize the first responders for the county, and the role that each played for the different municipalities, base county, and the public works, fire, emergency services, the police department, sheriff's department, and many others, the Georgia State Patrol, the power companies, the health department. There was a slew of folks, a slime, there's a bunch of people, that came together for quite some time, that planned for, deliberated, and then executed those plans during Hurricane Irma. And it was very befitting, I thought, that Chairman Stonaker pulled everybody together, and he had presented this little token to me as mayor for the City of Perry, but it is not my award. And we each had an opportunity to speak. In my opinion, the people who made the difference are y'all, the people who work for you, our public works folks, the people on the ground made things happen. The only reason we're here is to provide you with the right equipment, with the right personnel, with the right timeframe, give you some vision, and then get out of your way and let you do your job. At times like this, it is very clear, not only to me, but it should be to the community as a whole, why Houston County is the way it is, and that we're so successful. Chief Williams was the head of this whole EMA, I won't call it a fiasco, but the weather event, sometimes it can feel like that, from that standpoint, and he's in charge and did a fantastic job, and I wanted to publicly thank you for your efforts, and you basically slept there quite some time, and that's nothing new for you in the 911 center. But I also wanted to publicly thank these firefighters, and chief, your officers, and our public works department, and anyone else who had a hand in the planning and in the execution for what got us through Hurricane Irma. It was projected to be a lot worse than it was, we did have damage, and we survived. We survived because not only did we already plan for it, but we have the right people in the right places, and they did the right thing at the right time. Now, I didn't say this morning I should have. We were expecting that storm to hit us, and we were expecting and receiving damage. Not, to my knowledge, the first person, man or woman, who was tasked with a job, called in off duty, said, "I gotta take care of my family first." Now, that was important, and don't get me wrong, because everybody takes care of their home, but everybody without fail put their community first. And that's not just in the City of Perry, it was countywide. That makes me feel proud, not only to be a citizen of Perry, but of Houston County and this community, and that's what makes the difference. And I wanted y'all to be aware of this small token that says, "We survived together Hurricane Irma, September 11th, 2017, City of Perry. Thank you to all that provided service. This is your award. Thank you, Chief, for leading this effort. Thank you, Chief and Chief, for the people who y'all direct, but thank y'all for what you have done and continue to do on a daily basis. This is yours, very small, but very meaningful. Congratulations and thank you for being on our team."
If you don't mind, just saying, as the EMA Director, I work two decks. I have a fire uniform on, I'm sorry it smells like smoke, I just came back with my house fire. But on the EMA side of the house, all three municipalities and the county government are under one emergency management program. I cannot ask for better leadership from the elected officials, all the way down to the firefighter on the tailboard, or used to go to the tailboard with the truck, can't do anymore, to the public works, to everyone, tremendous job. They made my work much easier. I just coordinated the middle. They did all the work, did all the planning. And it's an honor to work with these folks on a daily basis. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief. Chief?
Well, I thought about earlier, if I had to speak at the meeting this morning, what I wanted to say was, being here almost a year, I'm very proud and thankful for the relationship that we have with the City of Perry and the Houston County folks there and City of Morrodonne as well, Centerville. But, you know, we do a lot of work with Houston County, they support us through EMA and other things, so, again, just very proud of that relationship we have there, and I'm proud of these guys that work here for the City of Perry, and the fire department, and what they did on that day. And that 24-hour period we ran, probably, I think it was about eighty-five fire calls during that time, that 24-hour period, and these guys, you know, they worked really hard, and I'm very proud of them, and I'm proud of the city for all that we did as well, so, I'm very thankful.
Chief Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. I've worked with Chief Williams for an awful long time, and I've worked with Chief Parker for a very short time. It's a pleasure to work with both of these gentlemen, they're professionals. This was a total team effort for Houston County, you know, Perry Police Department included. We had a plan going in, despite what the crowd said this morning, the plan did survive the first contact, and, you know, we were well-staffed, well-prepared, and fortunately the weather helped us out a little bit also. But, EMA, again, take over there, does a great job. You know, Jimmy brings his cotton, stays up there for two or three days when necessary, along with some others, but everybody from Team Perry did a great job, came in, stayed as long as it took, worked as hard as it took, got engaged, and began the next day. And so, that's all we can ask for, I'm very proud of everybody involved, and I think we did an outstanding job.
Absolutely. Please help me thank these men and women who lay our lives.
October 2017 is known as Triple Ribbon Month. Friday, this past Friday, we met at Central Georgia Technical College, the three mayors, the Chairman Stonaker for the Houston County Commissioners, Colonel Chris, the representing of the base personnel, and it's something that we do every month, the National Red Ribbon Campaign does several things, since it's a triple ribbon event. It makes awareness of domestic violence, of national breast cancer awareness month, and from drug abuse. Those three things can do nothing but devastate an individual and a family. The more awareness that can be made prevalent in each of these areas, the better we'll all be, and I'm not gonna read the entire proclamation, I'll have it available if you'd like to see it. It's something that I think is very important for the community to pull together in order to put efforts forth in making the community aware that these three things will not be tolerated, and we will have different assets available for people who may need help in each of these. The bottom line is, we're individually responsible, quite frankly, for doing something about it. If you see something, say something. If you know something, get help, whether you do it or have someone else do it. It's critically important and saves lives. I wanted y'all to be aware that I signed on behalf of the City of Perry, Triple Ribbon Month. Thank you.
And we have Mr. Brendan King, who has recognition, I believe.
I'm Mayor Council. I first would like to apologize for slight confusion. Obviously, I did mention it to Ms. Sanders about coming tonight to be introduced to council, I forgot the other two. But tonight, we do have Ms. Valerie Sanders, who accepted a position as the Customer Service Manager. She comes to us with twenty years plus experience in billing and collections of customer service and customer relations, as well as employee development and training, so we are very happy to have her. She's been two weeks on the job, she, I think she has learned a lot, and we were just talking today, and told her in a month she will have it all down pat, and she's already engaged with this as a citizen, so, as she is working, and she's working out fine thus far, so, I'd like to introduce to you all Ms. Valerie Sanders. Would you like to say?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your opportunity to serve the City of Perry, and I hope that I can work up to at least part of your expectations. I don't think I'll make it all the way. It's been an extreme learning experience already.
And Ms. Sanders, we want to thank you, number one, for thinking enough for the City of Perry to apply for the job, and number two, congratulations on attaining that level, and number three, for still being here.
I doubt.
After having been here for a few days. That's not that we're that bad, sometimes new positions can be overwhelming, we know that you've got the talent, we know that you've got the perseverance, and we know that you've got everything that it takes in order to make this particular position go very smoothly. We're looking forward to your talents, and we're looking forward to you using them for the benefit of not only our employees, but also for all of our customers for the City of Perry. Welcome to the City of Perry, we're glad you're here. Please let us know if we can have any work. Thank you.
I'll give all those angry ones your part.
They already have. It's usually the other way around. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you.
I believe that's all on number four. Item five, community partner updates. Is there any member of the community who are community partners of which does the City at this time?
Thank you. Chief Parker, I know these gentlemen are very appreciative of watching you receive your award, and I really thank them for being here from that standpoint, but this has gotta be one of the most boring things you will ever experience from this point forward. You're welcome to stay, but I'll let Chief Parker make that call, if you'd like to go on, you're welcome to. I didn't want y'all to feel like you had to stay on our behalf, but thank you for the job that y'all do on that. Chief Parker?
Y'all are welcome to go or stay if you like. I know we got dinner. Thank you all. We want to keep them aboard. Item six, appointments to boards, commissions, and authorities. Item six A, we have an informant to the Housing Authority for the City of Perry. Council, you have in your packets a letter from the Housing Authority for the City of Perry addressed to myself, based on the subject of award member certification. Dear Mr. Fairclaw, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank you for your support and assistance in certifying our board members. In order for the authority to operate in an efficient and effective manner, we will need to recertify several of our current board members by December 2018. As you are aware, the assignment of board members rests solely with you. We appreciate your allowing us input. We currently have seven board members since the assignment of Ms. Jane Thomas. We're asking for recertification certificate for the following, Ms. Phyllis Ingram. Again, we appreciate your support and look forward to your resolution of assignments, Council. You have this letter before you. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we recertify Ms. Ingram as requested. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item seven, are citizens with input? Is there any member of the general public who wishes to address council in any matter Thank you. Item eight is the review of minutes. Item eight A, Council, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the September 18th, 2017 work session, the September 19th, 2017 pre-council meeting, the September 19th, 2017 council meeting, and the September 25th, 2017 special meeting. As a matter of note, Councilmember King was absent from the September 19th, 2017 pre-council and council meetings. Council, you've got these minutes before you, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented. There's a motion, is there a second? Motion is a second. Are there any discussions, additions, deletions, or changes to these minutes? Thank you, Councilmember King. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Councilmember King for the September 19th, as noted, based on his absence. Motion carries, thank you. Item nine is old business, nine A, or ordinances for the second reading and adoption. Item nine A one, Council, this is the second reading of an ordinance for the rezoning of property from the City of Perry R-3, multifamily residential to C-3, Central Business District. The property is located at 905 Ball Street. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is a request for a 0.15 acre parcel of land on Ball Street. It is contiguous to the C-3 district on the north side and across the street. The property was previously used as an office. It was vacated several years ago, and was re-leased earlier this year as an office. We realize at that point that it had never been, the zoning had never been changed, so the property owner has requested the C-3 zoning classification, which is appropriate, it complies with the company's plan, and the planning commissioner has approved it.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Council, are there any questions of Mr. Wood concerning this particular item at this time? Thank you, sir. Council, this is the second reading, it is time for adoption. If you see fit, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance for the rezoning of property from City of Perry R-3, multifamily residential to C-3, Central Business District, 905 Ball Street, as described. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten is any other old business, item ten A, or any other old business from the mayor? I have none. Item ten B, is any other old business from council members? Mr. Jones?
No, sir.
Mr. Walker?
No, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
No, sir.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item ten C, is any other old business from the city manager? Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item ten D, is any other old business from the city attorney? Mr. Holbert?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item eleven is new business, item eleven A, or matters that have been referred from the October 2nd, 2017 work session, and the October 3rd, 2017 pre-council meeting. We have a few items for addressing. Item eleven A one, we're being asked to adopt a resolution establishing the city's animal retention policy. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, you've discussed this resolution, you've had input from interested groups. The administration recommends to you to adopt resolution with some of the items added that came out to you in the June, or the September 25th memo, plus adding, as we discussed, the pre-council donations go to license first. We recommend to you to adopt this.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Is any member of council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this policy, as has been previously discussed? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt a resolution establishing the city's animal retention policy as amended in the pre-council session and discussed previously. Motion and a second? Motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven A two, we've been asked to approve establishing the position of an assistant city manager. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is an item that you have talked about and input, and we recommend to you to approve establishing the position. Once you approve it, we will begin the advertising process.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Is any member of council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore's staff concerning this particular item? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve establishing the position of assistant city manager as presented. There's a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven A three, we have a resolution before us that will name two parks. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this follows up discussion that you had at your last work session and work session two meetings ago. We are recommending to you to name the site identified as a JC site to be called Legacy Park, and the site identified as Third Street to be named Crossroads Park.
Does any member of council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution naming two parks. That the site identified as the JC's building site is to be named Legacy Park, and the site identified as Third Street is to be named Crossroads Park. There's a motion, is there a second? Motion is a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, is anything that we need to address from the work session last night or this afternoon's pre-council meeting?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item eleven B, or ordinances for the first reading and introduction. Eleven B one, Council, this is the first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter 23 of the municipal code to create a new Article Six, Section 23 dot 70 dash 23 dot 78 entitled Utility Accommodation Policy. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your package is an ordinance for first reading, which will update our control and the process for applying for franchise on the use of city rideaway.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Is any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this particular policy? Mr. Gilmore, does this not follow closely to the Georgia Municipal Association recommended outlined ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt a resolution approving, excuse me. At this time, this is the first reading and introduction for the first reading of an ordinance that will amend chapter 23 to create this utility accommodation policy. Do we need to vote on this as the first reading and introduction? For causes of first reading and introduction, there's no required action by council at this time. Thank you. I've got to get on my cell. Item eleven C, resolutions for consideration and adoption. Eleven C one is a resolution approving the acquisition of property. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your packet is a resolution affirming and voting for the first piece of property. One is property along Big Union Creek Waterway, which is donated, a second parcel was purchased also for Motor Centennial Park, it cost $91,100. And the third in your packet is the new water plant cycle by Calum Park, purchased for $89,800. For your consideration, as we talked about in pre-council, we also have confirmed now the donation of another parcel for the Big Union Creek from Ichibor, and we'd like you to add that in as.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Is any council member have any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the acquisition of property as described. There's a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item eleven C two is a resolution amending the City of Perry fee schedule. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your packet is a recommendation to make some adjustments to our youth basketball program based on discussion we had at your last work session relative to payment of security payments, which you all agree the city will pick up and not charge on the participants.
Any questions of Mr. Gilmore concerning this item? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt a resolution amending the City of Perry fee schedule as described. There's a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item eleven D is the award bids. Item eleven D one is bid number 2018 dash two, sewer repairs. Mr. McMurray?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have a recommendation of award for 2017 sewer point repairs project. In this bid, we received four responses. The low building was the Renee Group Incorporated at $161,197.50. City staff and Carter and Sloop Consulting Engineers have reviewed this bid and deemed it acceptable for the city. City staff recommends approval of this bid.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Any questions of Mr. McMurray concerning this particular bid from council? I'm waiting on my document to load, sorry, sometimes I, this computer runs a little slow. If there are no questions, Mr. McMurray, then thank you, sir. Council, you have heard the request we have before you, the recommendation of award of bid number 2018 dash bid number two thousand eighteen dash oh-two for the sewer point repairs. The engineering department recommendations as to award the bid in the amount of one hundred sixty-one dollars, one hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents to the Renee Group Inc. Is there a motion in the second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven D two is bid number two thousand eighteen dash zero-three for uniform rental. Ms. Kim.
Thank you, mayor. Council, the information we have in your packet is recommendations by the public or department for the uniform, the weekly uniform rental services for public departments, recreation, leisure services department, and bed maintenance, as well as the net and cleaning for each of the city buildings. The recommendations were based, recommendations for uniform for the weekly rental of the various services as described.
Are there any questions, Ms. Kim, regarding this bid? Thank you, Ms. Kim. Council, you have heard the recommendation. You have the information before you. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the uniform rental recommendation as presented. Is there a motion in the second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven D three is bid number two thousand eighteen dash zero-five for signage fabrication. Mr. Smith.
Mayor. Mayor and council, moving forward with the city's wave finding signage program, you have before you documentation pertaining to the fabrication and installation of three signs at three city facilities. We went out for bid for the installation and fabrication of a brick and mortar sign here at City Hall, a brick and mortar sign at the Perry Public Safety Complex, and then a dual post sign at the Perry Animal Shelter. We have received two bids, and staff is recommending moving forward with the low bid provided by United Signs for thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Council, you have heard the recommendation. You have before you for bid number two thousand eighteen dash zero-five. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the record department designer's recommendation to award the bid in the amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars to United Signs as described. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item eleven E are matters from the engineering department. Item eleven E one is the Bear Branch Road resurfacing. Mr. McMurray.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet, you will see a memo, September twenty-sixth. We were approached by the Houston County Public Works Department. They are hoping to resurface a portion of Bear Branch Road. That is a total of four hundred and eight, four thousand eight hundred linear feet. Seventy-five percent of this portion is in the city of Perry. Twenty-five percent of this is in the county. The county has prepared an estimate. That estimate for resurfacing is seventy-three thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars. The twenty-five percent total for the county will be eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars. The city will share the seventy-five percent totaling fifty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. City staff has reviewed the condition of this section of road and recommends resurfacing with the current twenty seventeen L-M.
This year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Is any member of council having any questions, Mr. McMurray, at this time?
My understanding, it wouldn't be coming out of L-M, it would be coming out of these blocks. Funding would be through the block.
That's correct. Repairers portion.
Right.
Okay. That's correct. Mr. McMurray, the county's L-M project, this is on their list of roads for their L-M project, and they're asking us to repave the portion of the road that's in the city so they can do the whole thing at one time. Is that correct?
That's correct. This short portion is the only portion that's remaining on Bear Branch to be resurfaced. The additional portion from all the way to one twenty-seven from the Bear Branch pump station has already been resurfaced in twenty sixteen.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any further questions, Commissioner McMurray? Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the request to repave Bear Branch Road or the fifty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars that will be the city's portion based on the numbers that you presented. Is there a motion in the second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven E two is revision two to task order twenty-five. Mr. McMurray.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet, you'll see a memo for September twenty-first regarding the new water plant site and the type of water plant to be constructed. Our engineer, Constantine, has presented a task order for forty-eight thousand dollars to change this task from a pre-engineered water plant to a cast-in-place concrete filter and flocculation-based plant. The engineered task order is an additional forty-eight thousand for engineer work. The city recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. We've had this discussion in the past. You may remember the discussions concerning this particular plant itself and our decision to go forward with this type of plant, and this is one of the changes that are necessary in order to accomplish that particular goal. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve this change order in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars as described. No move? Motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Item eleven F is a special event application. Eleven F one, the City of Perry is hosting a pre-community tailgate event at Heritage Park on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, from eleven a.m. until nine p.m. Chief Lynn.
Yes, your mayor. Mayor and council, this special event is hosted by the city, and it is a tailgate party for the Georgia Florida game. It will have the use of alcohol at the venue. This will be a BYOB, our first venture into that, and we reviewed the application, application is ordered, and police department recommends approval.
Thank you, chief. Any member of council having any questions, chief, regarding this particular event? Hearing none. Council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve this special event application for the pre-community tailgate event at Heritage Park, Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from eleven to nine as described. Is there a motion in the second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, is there any other new business that needs to come before us at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item twelve is other business in the supplemental agenda. Item twelve A are resolutions for consideration and adoption. Item twelve A one is a resolution adopting the Recreation Trail Plan. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet is a resolution with the attached map that shows the trail concept plan circling the city, a connecting wall of our existing and proposed destination parks. Plus, over time, I'm sure they work next schools and other things like that, and we would recommend to you to adopt this concept plan. Once you adopt it, and that will provide the guidelines for new subdivision development, applying for recreation or any other type of grants, capital spending, and the development of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Is any member of council having any questions, Mr. Gilmore, regarding this particular idea of a recreation trail plan concept? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt a resolution that adopts a recreation trail plan concept. Is there a motion in the second? A motion in the second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, is there any other other business in the supplemental agenda we need to address?
There is none.
Item thirteen, department head items. We'll start with the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker.
Yes, mayor. Mayor and council, and I just wanted to let you and the public know that the new rescue truck has been put in service and so far has responded to about twenty emergency calls and therefore is doing exactly what we hoped it would, and that's taken a lot of load off the bigger apparatus, and we're appreciative of having that new apparatus in our fleet. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Anything further?
No, sir.
Thank you. Police Department, Chief Lynn.
Yes, sir. One item, it's a community item. Tomorrow morning from eight to ten, coffee with a cop. So, come out and have your favorite beverage with your favorite cop in the morning, or whatever you buy Starbucks in any fashion. So, it's a Starbucks from eight to ten tomorrow. We'd like for y'all to join us. It's a national event, but this is Perry's iteration.
Very good. Looking forward to it. Thank you, chief. From the Department of Leisure Services, Mr. Guy.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, we do have one special event coming up in leisure services that we've never had before. They'll have a free event for the public called a Trump or Treat. It is going to be held at Roger Park. It will start at six p.m. It's kind of a new concept and only they've done it before. Those who wish to participate will decorate their car and or truck by everything that they want. I encourage people to go on Google and just Google image Halloween trunks and you'll see some pretty cool stuff. We do, the only stipulation that we have for those who participate is please do not bring home any candy. This is for safety. We want stuff free packaged to know how people are still throwing their bag and just tampering. Any questions or information without on social media, contact us at the leisure service department and we'll continue to get a good turnout.
This is Halloween.
Halloween. This will be the night of Halloween, and it will be from six to eight p.m. So, folks can attend the activities on Main Street that are potentially done and starts earlier, and they can wrap up their treat and treating with the children if they wish to at the park.
Very good. That's all I have. What are your dress names?
I'm called Darth Vader, I believe. He's gonna sue me this year. Either they have a Mary Poppins, I have to say.
Ms. Palmer? I expect you to be there with a camera. We jam around, he decides.
You got it.
That's great. We're looking forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Guy. From the Department of Economic Development, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, I do have a couple of items for y'all this evening. Going back on the special event application that was just approved, the city is hosting a tailgate event on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. Heritage Park will open around eleven o'clock. Will allow cars to come in, set up tailgates. It's first come, first served. No glass of any sort, but you can allow to bring tables, chairs, tents, grills, you know, the whole shebang. So, we're looking forward to a good turnout. We'll have a twelve-by-eight LED screen there for the games. We'll show the noon game and then followed by course, the main course, the three-thirty Georgia Florida game, and then we'll be closing it down around nine o'clock. So, we'll expect everyone to be out of there. Again, everything is first come, first served. It's the first time we're doing it. We've gotten a lot of good response from the public out of this. We hope, we hope it's not too big of an event, but we will be prepared. I've got fellow department heads on this. And again, this is from eleven to nine on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, Heritage Park, which is two thousand five Sand Dunn Boulevard. Another event coming up is actually the Saturday before the tailgate event. On October twenty-first, the Perry Housing Team will be hosting the annual fall neighborhood cleanup. It will be in New Hope this year. We'll be meeting around eight-thirty at Johnny Noble Dixon Park, which is six-twelve Plum Street here in Perry. From there, we'll team up, fan out, clean up the neighborhood, and then have a nice barbecue launch for those who participated afterwards. Always a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Looking forward to those events. From the Department of Finance and Administration, Ms. Kim.
It's my concern.
Thank you. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of City Clerk, Ms. Lauren.
Yes, Ms. Lauren, sir.
Thank you. Item fourteen, your council member items. Ms. Kim.
Hello.
Ms. Jackson. Ms. Hunt. Ms. Walker.
No, sir.
Ms. Jones. Mr. Gilmore. Sir. Mr. Holber.
No, sir.
Thank you. Item fifteen, this general public items is written, a member of the general public wishes to address council on any item at this time. We can always ask somebody to call him. Which is not an option. Thank you. Item sixteen, your mayor items. Just have a couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention. We have a few visitors that are going to be showing up Thursday for the Georgia National Fair for ten days, eleven days. Please draw up red carpet for them and be careful. The Robbins Regional Chamber of Commerce is having eggs and issues Thursday morning at seven forty-five at Perry Martin Center. The topic will be housing healthcare. Lee Sandler is also having a ribbon cutting at three p.m., if I'm not mistaken, at their offices on Perry Parkway. Our next regularly scheduled work session will be Monday, October the sixteenth at five p.m. Our next regularly scheduled pre-council and council meeting will be Tuesday, October the seventeenth, beginning at five p.m. within six p.m. I've already mentioned the Hurricane Irma information. If you see a first responder, thank them for the job that they continue to do. As a matter of note, from our public works, we are still busy collecting debris. I do know that there are still some piles around the City of Perry. We're getting there as fast as we can. Please be patient. The final thing that I have tonight has to do with the terrible thing that happened in Las Vegas this week. You never know. You would think that you can go to a concert and enjoy yourself. You would think that you can go to a restaurant and eat. You would think that you can go to a ballgame and not have a worry in the world. You would think that you can go to a fair and enjoy yourself. But there are those in this world who wish us harm, not only in this country but in others. And it pains me to the core to know that that happens. Stand firm. Be vigilant. Pay attention to those around you. And like I said before, if you see something, please say something. That's what nine-one-one is for. And I've said this before, too. Our police department does a fantastic job. They have and they will continue to be the number one police department, I think, in the world. However, they are not a pro-action force. It is up to each of us individually to be vigilant and to pay attention to our surroundings. It always has been. We are our number one protectors, and the police will come when they're called, and that's their job. Don't ever think that there's going to be a police officer between you and trouble. If they're close enough, they will be because that's their job. But please remember that we have the responsibility to ourselves, our families, and our communities to pay attention to what's going on and to call for help when it's warranted. It's our responsibility and ours alone. That's what this country was founded on, and sometimes I think we tend to forget that. Help each other. That's why we're here. Please pray for these families. And please, never lose sight that we still have the best country anywhere and the best city. Y'all enjoy the fair. We stand adjourned.